Roll call. Paul Cassidy.
Here.
Tanya Hogan, here.
Beverly Rose.
Here.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Mark Richard.
Here.
Roy Martin.
Here.
Sarah Clemmons.
Here.
On September 29th, our clerk supervisor signed a form required by the state of Michigan, certifying that required public hearings and board adoption of millage rates had already taken place, even though they never happened. It's on the agenda tonight, two months after they both signed their document. The form was miscertified, and a resolution today does not cure a false certification, so you will need to amend Form L 4029. And Mr. Cassidy, as a licensed attorney, did you not understand what you were signing, or did you simply not care? And Tanya, you said that this job is learn as you go. Seriously? Here's something to learn tonight. When signing forms, accuracy matters. Before signing anything, read it, understand it, and verify it, so we don't end up with another public record that was falsely certified. As concerned residents, many of us have also had to learn as we go without the training opportunities that the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer have at their fingertips. Because of our ongoing concerns, another resident, Kathy Navatchek, and I recently decided to review nearly three years of township agendas and minutes. We looked at almost two years of agendas and minutes our previous clerk, Cindy Valentine, had prepared, and compared them to what's been prepared since Tanya and Paul took office. What we found was troubling. We discovered that no public hearing was held for the police, fire, or garbage millage and special assessment rates, which had expired. We also found inconsistencies in the General Appropriations Act adopted June 30th, and the water and sewer rate resolutions approved by the previous board expired. Water on December 31st, 2024, and sewer on June 30th, 2025. We found no evidence that renewals were ever placed on an agenda or adopted. Additionally, the $30 water debt service charge now appears on water bills as CI, Capital Improvement, but we found no formal ordinance amendment legally changing the name of that charge. To be clear, I support that charge, but was it done legally? I did notify the Board of our concerns, and some are addressed in tonight's agenda. The public has a right to know whether or not this Board intends to address all of our serious and documented concerns. As Supervisor, Cassidy is essentially the head of the township and is responsible for overall leadership and administration, so these failures are shared by the clerk and supervisor. And here's an easy tip on learning as you go. When someone as informed and dedicated as John DeBoyer raises concerns over these same issues, which he has done over the past year, please pay attention to him. Clay Township is not a classroom for beginners, state law is not optional, and taxpayers are not guinea pigs for officials who didn't know or didn't care enough to find out.
Good evening. Just wanted to state for the record, I got the Clay Township Master Plan here at page 61. In terms of service ratings from the public input survey, the police and fire was the best in Clay Township. It was ranked five stars, so figure the public should know when you're talking about that for a millage. Thank you.
There's no further public comment. We'll go to, in the public hearing, we go to public comments.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing.
Are you making the motion?
We have a motion to close. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
So relative to the ZBA appointments today, I'm going to recommend you make a motion to reapprove Joe Bozzi to the ZBA Board. I would recommend you do not make a motion to reappoint Brian Treppa. That would allow Brian's term to end, and then when Brian's term ends, he can, just like everybody else, he can apply to be on the zoning board. So before, I just wanted to state that before I get into it. I hand it out, you'll see the public input survey. Again, this is page 61 of the master plan. The zoning code enforcement was the worst rated according to the public input survey. Now, I understand that's just not the ZBA, but it is partially the ZBA. Brian has stated multiple times, he's been doing this for 10 years. If you had a head coach, and you were on the bottom of the division for years, you'd start putting two and two together and think, maybe we should make a change. And that's why I think reappointing Joe is the right move, because right now Joe's the vice chair. He'll slide in right into the chair, they'll be able to appoint a vice chair, and you'll be good to go. I also want to put out, as part of the master plan, Sans Souci, as you can see, waterfront view got eight stars. That's the second most critical thing in all Clay Township, other than the pier in Pearl Beach, and when that was brought up to Brian, he poo-pooed it. So it bothers everyone else's view, but Brian didn't seem to care. Now, I also want to correct the record. There's Brian and some other members of the ZBA. You'll see right there, there's the zoning application process, and you see right in section two, the builder who said this says, "The size of the boat requires a taller roof and knee walls." It doesn't get much clearer than that. Furthermore, the lawyer, which is on the last page, and I highlighted it for you, the even lawyer says, "His boat has a significant navigation equipment and mandates a higher clearance." Now, we as the public, this is all we're getting. If someone on the ZBA is going to say, "No, no, no, there's more to this, and this is all we're getting," you can understand the frustration amongst the public. The other thing I want to break up is, they talk about, the building was mostly complete, which is why they approved it. Now, could you imagine if the police department caught a bunch of bank robbers, and they were about to get away, and they said, "Stop, you know, you're violating our robbing ordinance." And the robber said, "Yeah, but we're almost done." Or in that case, you know, give it away. No, it doesn't work that way. The state of the building has no state on whether or not Brian should have approved that zoning ordinance or not. And then lastly, again, I don't want to be anti-Brian, and to show there's no animosity, when he reapplies to come back onto the zoning board, I'll be the first one here to say, "Yes, bring Brian on." As you all know, I've been a steward for the zoning board. The more people we can get on, the better. But you have to make a change, and here's why. At the planning commission, the building inspector brought up that you have a lot more people who are going to ask for height variances, because they want bigger garages, just like this was Big Boathouse. You've got to stop this now. Brian has a tendency to hand out variances like it's Halloween candy. You don't want that in your community. Furthermore, as I mentioned last time, Brian has a tendency to do a lot of talking. You can't have a discussion if he's doing all the talking. Joe, on the other hand, if any of you know Joe Bozzi, he's a good man, he's a simple, he speaks quietly, he lets other people talk, and the proof in that is, three ZBA meetings ago, Joe was the chair, and it was one of the smoothest meetings he ever saw. So Joe is completely competent. My point is, 15 years ago, it was hard to get a variance approved to Clay Township. Recently, like I said, they're handing them out for bad reasons. This summer, someone came in and says, "We have a lot of stuff, so we need more storage." That's not a reason. That's self-created, just like a big boat is self-created for a boathouse, just like a big truck, that's why you want a bigger garage. Those are self-created issues, and I think the ZBA needs to understand what practical difficulty is. And I think if you make the change, you don't have to embarrass Brian, you don't have to defame him, there's nothing dishonorable about letting his term end. And I think the right thing to do, especially with all the things that are coming along in the future, have Joe, reappoint him, they'll pick a new vice chair, and then, like I said, the day Brian's term ends, he can reapply to come on to the zoning board, and I think we should all welcome him to come on. But we need a change with the way it is right now. Thank you for your time.
If there's no further public comment, we'll move to bills payable. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $176,284.4.
I'll second.
Any discussion, any need? Do a roll call.
Roll call. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Mark Richard.
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes. Paul Cassidy.
Yes.
Beverly Rose.
Yes.
Roy Martin.
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to supervisors' report. Our stage arrived today. They said it would arrive in November, and it did, and Lance and I took quite a look at it, and it looks to be a fabulous stage. It'll go for the next 100 years. It's well-built, it's quite a, quite a stage. But we're going to have to do some, Lance and I talked about, perhaps paving an area to drive on and pull that stage, and then, and then pull it off, because it is quite heavy. It has a lot of hydraulics to it. So it's nice to see that stage arrive. I did talk to Nick Bosso, Nick Bosso at the Michigan Department of Treasury about COVID funds, and he told me that you can spell COVID funds, you can spend COVID funds on anything that a township can spend money on. You can, that's, it's a replacement. I know the law changed a few times, but in the end, he says, "You can spend COVID funds." Everybody wants to, anyone wants his number and talk to him directly, I'll certainly provide it for you. There's the gentleman on the middle channel. Roman and I went to see him, because he's got quite a, a deal going on there, and it, he has had those problems in the past, and went over to talk to him. I offered to try to find some help for him to remove things from his home. He did call me back and said he, he would like some help. So I'm trying to contact, I, I got a call into Kevin Wizerk to see if Kevin could get a couple guys and use a dump truck and help pull off some of his, his property. I haven't talked to Kevin yet, but he's a pretty decent guy, and, and likes to help people. Also, we have the Thanksgiving gathering in Kids Village, and Cheryl's here, and she could speak to that. I don't know if you saw coming in, some of the stuff she put together, but it's going to start tomorrow night, and, go ahead, Cheryl.
Thank you. Cheryl, we're Steve-O. So we have two separate things going on, and one that's going to be starting tomorrow is something that I felt very passionate about before I even started here with the township, is creating a senior community group, but I wanted to rename it, so I kind of went with over 55 in activities, because senior sounds like, you know, we're old, but anyway. So tomorrow's just a casual gathering. It was sort of put together last minute, and I'm going to do a Christmas craft with people and help them if they need help. I have some other assistants coming that are going to help. I have some snacks and food, and some cookies and muffins and waters and all that for people to enjoy while they're doing them, but it's really to start just that sense of gathering. And then I would like to utilize whoever might be interested within that group, and sort of use them as a committee to foster a monthly gathering of sorts. I asked for permission for, because it was last minute, of some of the board members, if we could utilize the room tomorrow, so we're going to utilize the room tomorrow. It's from 6 to 8, 9, if anybody would like to come, even if you're on the cusp of 55, you know, whatever. But, so if anyone has any questions, I put together some sample crafts of what we might be doing tomorrow, and I'll have some games, I'll have some music playing, some Christmas, to sort of get in the spirit, and then thought that that might be a good chance for anyone who might be lonely in the community to start to get to know some other people, and maybe foster some friendships. So that's the over 55 activities group that I'm trying to look into to create that monthly. Separately from that, was also another idea that I brought to Paul, and I've talked with Bev about it, and Tanya a little bit, but it's a kid village. So it's an interactive play village that is a permanent structure within the township, which, within the township park, and it would be permanent structures that would have exterior elements to that to fight the outside that we have to deal with here. But it can be decorated based on holidays for, you know, Easter. We could have an Easter bunny in the village, Santa could be part of that. The kids could do their own trick-or-treat Halloween things, so we could utilize it for activities. We could also rent it out for private parties, as if a party venue type thing, that it could be a private venue. I have done this village for a sports center in the past, and one thing that we did that I think would be really interesting for us here, is that it, we created sponsorship. So let's say if we had a pizzeria, we had Little Caesar's, because they're a local business, sponsor the pizzeria, or an auto shop doing our little mechanics garage, or things like that. A little jail, a little police department, pretend rest, and the fire, the police department could sponsor parts of that. So that's just one thing of the village, so it's just to start the conversation and see what people's thoughts or feedback might be, and I think that's it, so.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the board approved from 11:10:25, the in-between meeting checks, and the board of trustee meeting minutes from 11:10:25.
Support.
All right, any discussion? All right, we'll vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Unfinished business, only Board of Appeal member appointment, Brian Treppa and Julie Bozzi.
So after the meeting last, the meeting two weeks ago, I ended up, and the concerns that were brought here, I ended up emailing with all the ladies that were, that are on the ZBA, just to, I wanted to get a sense of how they were feeling, because there were some pretty serious allegations that were brought to our attention. So I received responses from three of the women who said that they have no concerns at all, that Mr. Treppa has been a great support and very helpful to them on the board. They don't feel like they're not heard. They all felt like they weren't all heard, and they had no concerns. And then I know that the other member came in and met with Bev and Tanya.
Yep, I met with her, and she had no concerns about Brian. She said he's very helpful, and she thinks he does a good job as well.
I, I spoke with her as well, and I also reviewed the tape of the meeting, and I didn't see anything irregular. I, I know Mark thought that he's too overwhelming for them, but I don't, I don't get that. And so, do we have a motion on this, hon?
I will make a motion to reappoint Joe Bozzi and Brian Treppa to the ZBA Board.
Support.
Any further discussion? We'll take a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We've got new business, the healthcare proposals.
Okay.
God. Jesus.
From AccuSure is going to be joining us. Well, maybe Jack won't be joining us.
Tanya, is this to cover the stuff in our packet?
Yeah, it's just to go over what's in the packet.
Well, we could just, I think everybody's got a copy of the packet, right?
Yes, they should.
And, um...
I'll have to go to my office and get his number if we want to call him, which is, was working all day, and now it's not working.
I take it that, in looking at the medical snapshot here on the first page, they currently are paying $83,132, and if we renew, we'll go to $92,432? Is that correct?
Correct.
With the same deductible and the same terms.
If we increase the deductible, instead of it being 11.2 increase, it's 8.4.
Yeah, but, um, don't we, by contract, have to?
The same or better.
So what this, with the little bit higher deductible, nothing will change for any of our employees. The deductible just goes up by $1,000, and we will still do, we are still under the 20% that the township pays for health insurance on all of our employees. It's the exact same plan that they will have. They will have to change nothing. It just will be a little bit cheaper than the 11.2% increase. It's only an 8.4% increase if we go with the higher deductible plan. That's why the township switched to that plan, these types of plans in the first place, because overall, it saves the township money, so...
Yeah, I understand, but is their deductible presently 4,000?
Our deductible is presently 4,000. So we would just, it would just go up by 1,000, and...
So then that's not the same no more.
It's not the same anymore, is it?
Just the deductible, but the coverage...
It is the same in regards to, from the perspective from the employee's position, because with our high deductible plan, it's going to cover that regardless of whether it's 4,000 or 5,000.
Oh, okay.
Now, with the high deductible plan, I believe last year, don't quote me, but it's a rough number, I think the township got a rebate back of around $150,000 out of the $200,000 pool. So you have to take that number off that total that you're looking at for that annual cost.
That makes sense, yes.
What's the difference between, you know, the current and the renewal, as opposed to the one on the bottom, lower right? Let's see, HRA 4,000, 20%, $85,870.
That's Blue Care Network, not Blue Care, Blue Cross Blue Shield, so it's a PPO versus HMO, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's a different plan.
Yeah, and that's an in-network-only plan. There is no coverage for anything out of network. So that would be an issue with our unions, I believe.
Well, it sounds to me like it's this last one of 8.4%, 90,000.
That is looking like our best option. It's the only one that is comparable, besides staying with what we have, which is at an 11.2%. And, like, that is, you know, our best option is to go with a little bit higher deductible. Employees get the same coverage.
John, you said we got, like, you think we got, like, $100,000?
$150.
But are we only paying 90,000 here? Is that it?
So that's the cost of the premium.
Okay.
But because it's a high deductible plan, we're in a health reimbursement account with, with Burnham.
Yeah.
And then Burnham gives us back what we don't use up at the end of the year, and I believe last year was around $150,000. So it's two separate items, but the net, you have to figure your cost based on that number being reimbursed to give you the net cost. And I believe, I talked, when I talked to Jack Schmitz, he, he projected a $30,000 savings based on our 20%, the Tanya just talked about, off of that 92,432 increase for the, for the new premium. So it actually would come in at, yeah, I didn't do the math, because that's a monthly premium, but it would be $30,000 approximately less than that total, if that makes sense.
Well, does anybody like to make a motion on this?
Is that what Jack recommended then, Tanya, the?
Yes. Bev and I had a meeting with him before, what was it, last week? We had a meeting with him last week. We sat down, he went over everything with us, and that is our best option right now. There, there was multiple companies who wouldn't even provide quotes for us, and Priority Health and HAP, and United Healthcare, they are not options for us with our contracts, so this is pretty much, you know, it's like you do the 11.2% or you do the 8.4%.
Right, no, I get it. So that's the HRA 5,000, 20%, correct?
Correct.
So which, which one is your recommendation?
The HRA 5,000, 20%. Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I'll make a motion to approve the HRA 5,000, 20%, Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance.
I'll second.
All right. There's no further question. We'll take a vote. Do a roll call.
Mark Richard.
Yes.
Tanya Hogan, yes.
Yes.
Paul Cassidy? Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Go to 1B, Emergency Repair to Engine Number Four.
Good evening. On the sixteenth of this month, our truck was coming back. Our Engine Four was coming back from Algonack. And they ended up getting a flat on the vehicle. So we ended up having to call Ballard's out and tow the truck back to the fire station. Due to our truck has only a single tire on the rear. If we would have had duals on it at the time, we could have drove the truck back and then had the flat tire fixed and we would be back on our way. So I did talk to the clerk and I did get a quote on replacing the rear tires on that truck with dual tires, which is much safer than a single tire that we had on it. The clearance, or I should say the surface, riding surface would be double of what we had before. And it's much safer for the truck with that much weight on it. So I got ahold of Leslie Tire and they gave me a government pricing for four new tires and rims for that vehicle. And I had it put on, so I'm here today to explain to you why I did it.
So is there any more trucks that have the single rear where they were supposed to have dual?
Well, the truck came with dual tires originally.
Right.
And I have no idea why. I can imagine why it was changed to a single tire, because that truck was on the island. And I'm sure they tried to slide it by to get a ten dollar ticket instead of a thirty dollar ticket.
So this is the only truck that was changed? What I'm getting at is...
Yes.
All right.
This was originally a duly?
It was originally a duly.
Okay, wow. I was trying to figure that out.
I think the three thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars was well spent. I know some of the big over-the-road tires that the truckers have are much more expensive than that, but you did a lot more repairs with it. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the three thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents for the Engine Four repair out of line item two zero six zero 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 nine three one dash zero zero.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? Do a roll call.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go to Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, set fire mills?
No, we got the purchase on the pipe.
I'm sorry, I forgot the pipe locator. Mr. Sirdy's here.
I'm looking to purchase a new locator to replace the one that's thirty-five-plus years old. A lot of technology's come a long way in thirty years. It puts enough power into it to where we can detect longways on a lot of our water mains.
So it's going to save you a lot of time?
Yes, and then we're going to be more accurate.
No unnecessary thing.
Yeah.
So what do you use this for, Lance? To locate?
Water mains.
Water mains, water services?
Water services, correct. We're borrowing right now the one that Algonack has, which is the same one that I'm looking to order. It comes highly recommended from a lot of other contractors in the area. One of them is Dilute Construction that has three of these also that they swear by.
Have a warranty comes with this?
I believe it's three years.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, it's there.
And it comes with schooling. They will come out, school the whole crew on how to use it correctly and everything else to make sure that it's everything's... It's got six different frequencies, which is better for detecting certain types of water main and stuff like that, so... Plus, all of our water main now that's being put in is all has locate wire on it, in which you can hook to the locate wire in order to trace things also.
So can you use this direct connect and inductive?
Yes, yep. And I can hook the wires either on gas services. I can detect AT&amp;T. They've got a special clamp that goes around the wires that you can undo the AT&amp;T boxes and go around the cables in order to locate those cables. Same thing with Comcast. I can locate Comcast with it also.
Talking about fiber optic?
I can't locate fiber. Fiber's its own animal. And it actually takes a special locator that certain companies are supposed to have. We are having a hard time with a local... It's a new company that's doing Comcast. It's called On The Spot. And they are supposedly so backlogged and they don't have enough people to be doing their locate services. So even with this project that we have out here on Twenty-Nine, we're having a very hard time getting Comcast located that's underground. They keep calling it off and calling it off and calling it off, and it's just putting the project off that much farther.
Can you release a fiber optic detector?
You know, I don't know if we can, Mark. I don't know. And the other thing you got to worry about too is you're talking liability at that point in town. Because if you miss mark or you locate there what you thought was there, then you go and dig and you hit it. With fiber, it's a big another animal, is I guess the way to put it. It's just... and it's expensive to fix.
Send AT&amp;T a letter for no fault.
So they're going to give you a trade-in on the thirty-five-year-old unit?
No, we're going to still keep the thirty-five-year-old unit.
Okay.
It still works, but it just, it's not as accurate. You know yourself, John, which one I'm talking about.
So why'd you wait so long?
Why'd I wait so long? The double box Fisher does work.
Yeah.
It works, but not as well as what this does.
Oh, you got that in the budget, Lance?
You know, that's... this was not put in the budget. I will say that.
So what is, oh, seven forty-four meters and parts?
Yes.
The money's in that line of the...
Oh, yes, oh, yes. And it's split between water and sewer. The other way we can locate sewer lines is you put a fish tape down the sewer line and hook to the fish tape. And I can detect that all the way to the main also.
Well, it definitely helps you in eliminating damages to underground utilities. It probably saves you some time, correct?
Saves us a lot of time. Especially with this project that we're doing right now. All the services that are on the north side of the road that we need to locate in order for them to put that water main in, I need to know exactly where those services hook to the aid across the way. And it just makes it a whole lot easier to locate them with this type of locator.
Right.
Sounds like it'll be a worthwhile expenditure.
It'll be here for a long time. And it is fully rechargeable. That's the way I did spec it. It's a plug-in style unit. It's not a replaceable battery unit. You just, you plug it in, charge the batteries, and then go. Plus, it comes with a hard case to where it'd be, you know, able to be carried and taken everywhere it needs to go.
You said you had a service warrant on it, but can you have an extended service warranty on it?
I don't know if there is an extended one or not. What's nice about this company is that if, for whatever case the locator needs to go in, they supply you with a replacement unit until yours is fixed. They work real well with you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the seventy-two hundred radio detection locator for eight thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents to be paid out of line items five ninety and five ninety-one seven forty-four.
I'll second.
All right, we'll do a roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to Resolution twenty twenty-five nineteen, set the fire mills. Is there any motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five nineteen, set the fire mills. Our fire mills have not changed. The percentage has stayed the same.
Support.
All right, any discussion? Do a roll call.
So these mills are through June thirtieth of twenty-six, correct?
Yes.
Do a roll call.
Okay, Mark Richard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, set police mills. I think these are exactly the same as they have been as well every year.
I will make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty, set the police mills.
Have a second?
Yep, Sarah does.
Any further discussion? Do a roll call.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Go to Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, set garbage and refuse fees. Again, that's the same as they were last year, correct?
Correct. I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-one, set garbage and refuge fees.
Support.
So how long is our current garbage contract? When does that expire?
I think it's twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
I'm pretty sure.
So our rates are set with the company? I mean, is the one seventy-two per household, are we covering our costs?
Yes, I want to tell you that, you know, this is one of the biggest things we have complaints about is our garbage removal. People call all the time. They don't pick up from their house, sometimes on the whole street. Oil and gas in the road, things like that. And I talked to a number of... Well, I talked to Mayor Thompson on in New Baltimore. They have priority and they're very unhappy with them. They experience the same problems. I talked to Brad Kirsten in Chesterfield and he told me they actually keep track of how many complaints they get. And they got over seven hundred complaints against priority last year for these problems. So it is a problem, but I don't think there's a solution for it other than I know they're discussing not having riders on the trucks anymore, that everybody has to use an approved container, they'll only pick up the containers. But that isn't... that's not Emterah, that's priorities talking about that. But I believe we're paying the bill.
Are most of those complaints coming from the island?
No.
No.
No, they're actually all over.
I know the island had some problems a couple of years ago.
There was a few from the island, but most of them are on the mainland.
Either they don't pick it up, they have no problem just tossing your bins forever and breaking them.
I'm forever fished.
On a fifty mile an hour road and they're in the middle of the road half the time. We don't go out there.
But the one seventy-two per household is covering our costs currently? Because we have the option to go to one eighty, I see in this resolution. That's why I'm asking. We're covering our costs right now?
Yeah, we have to stick to the one seventy-two because the tax bills have already been printed and are going out.
Okay.
We cannot increase anything.
Okay, I mean, okay. And has there been any communication from any of the out-island people asking about coverage again, or they're happy with not having coverage?
The only thing I'm worried about is Russell Island.
I think Russell. Russell falls under...
It's a unique situation. There's a fellow that takes the barge over, gets the barge loaded up, brings it back.
Right.
But he's... I don't know how much longer he's going to want to do that.
Okay. So Russell, we're charging one hundred and thirty-seven per household, correct? And that, I think that includes Zug Island. And that's because of...
They don't have the...
No recycling? Okay, well, that's something we're going to have to address if he doesn't want to do that anymore. It's going to be an issue.
I think it's going to be sooner rather than later, that he's getting older. So I know this is something, like finding someone who will run a barge out there is something we need to start looking for.
Yeah, well, hopefully it gives us a little bit of a notice, huh?
Hopefully.
Anybody ever explore?
Should we have that conversation with him maybe?
Yes, I have his number.
Give us a heads up.
And I've talked to him.
More than thirty days?
Yeah.
What about putting a dumpster in that parking lot if that's an option?
The thing is, is they load it on the barge, they bring it back and they unload it.
Well, I'm talking about the people bringing their trash with them across the barge and putting it in the dumpster.
Well, the guy's going to want more money, obviously, if he's doing that.
What he's saying, what you're saying, Mark, is the residents would... I don't know, would put it in their dumpster.
Yeah, residents would throw their own trash with them. I mean, how much... if you've got big cartons that you're unpacking or a mattress or something like that, well, that's a little different. Then you call the people who own a dumpster that you've got, you know...
Yeah, I think that's what they're paying the one hundred and thirty-seven household for though.
Do we have a motion on this?
Yes, motion and support.
All right, take a roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
One G, Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-two, general operating mills. I see that's the same as well, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a motion on that?
I will make a motion to approve the general operating... Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-two, set general operating mills.
I'll second it. Take a roll call.
Okay, John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to one H, Community Garden Discussion.
So when I... when the community garden originally was proposed a couple of years ago, I was one of the residents that was involved in planning that. It was something that we tried to keep going, but it kind of like the ball got dropped. And I'd like to get it back started. I know I reached out to Paul and Bev and Tanya and I expressed interest in that. I mean, we have this huge space that could be beautiful for the whole local area, but it's just overgrown with weeds and it never really got off the ground like we wanted it to. So I have gathered, I've really reached out to the community to see if there was interest in actually getting it back to what it was originally planned to be. And thankfully, there's been a huge group of people that have come together that want to see it be what we originally planned for it to be and even bigger. I'm hoping... Obviously, we need to get the garden up and running. We want it to be like free produce and hopefully fruit and all that for just, and not just Clay Township residents, but people in the community in general. So there's people in Algonack that want to do it, Ira, the whole area. I'm hoping, I wanted to talk with Parks and Rec, that eventually we could do something together to get like a farmer's market there, to get family events and kids' events. Some people have thrown out the idea of like canning classes. That would not be ran by me. I can make pickles, that's about it. Or having like a kids' planting day and just different community events to bring people together. I know I've always said that I think we really need to come together as a community and I think there's a lot of opportunity here for us, our community, to thrive. I did reach out to the owners at Bosco's Bee's as well to see if they would be interested in putting a hive or two eventually there and educating people, and they said they definitely would be interested in talking further about it. So really, the questions that I've... So really the questions that I have right now about it is like, what are we allowed to do there as a board? What are we agreeing? Because that is township property. It's on the main road. Is it something that we can? I know the first thing that people have said, we need someone to store stuff. So I've talked with Roy and if the DDA would be willing to provide some type of shed or garage style thing there depending, you know, is that something we could do where we could put permanent fixtures there? I know, I did not call Mr. Meldrum myself, but somebody had talked with Mr. Meldrum who's out there storing all the equipment there right now and he talked about, he would like to donate a parking lot. I'm assuming a gravel parking lot. I wouldn't imagine it'd be concrete, it's a lot of money. But again, I don't know if that's something the board would agree to let us do on that property. People are talking about, we want to plant fruit trees to make a little tiny orchard there. So I guess I just need to know what I'm allowed to do and what I'm not allowed to do. And can we put permanent stuff there? Can we not put permanent stuff there?
I can only say that that property, according to the master plan, is designated for the new administration buildings. So I don't know where we're at with that. We did put a bid out for a study on feasibility of it and at least a cost structure for what it would take. And we haven't heard back from them yet, so I don't know where we're at with any of that.
Actually, I think that.
That was a couple of years ago and that was shut down because it was like $17 or $18 million. Because it was supposed to be police and fire and it just, let's add this, let's add this. It just got out of control.
Yeah, I don't think there's any plan currently.
I don't think there's any plan at all.
I think you could probably do anything you want with that, but I'd be very worried about putting any permanent structures with footings and all that.
Yeah, I mean more like a shed. Yeah, shed type stuff that can be delivered and if it has to be moved, it has to be moved. I guess more permanent would be like trees. Can we plant trees there?
There's what about, is there about seven acres there? Is that what's there?
I don't think we're trying to use all that.
Six acres? Cheryl and I have looked at that in terms of not actually creating the downtown district, but creating a district of where that could be developed by a developer with the right plan to come in with maybe commercial on the bottom and a two-story living quarters above it, which it seems like a lot of cities are going to now. Not that we have a downtown area, but that could be, could be developed very nicely for an area that would attract commercial and residential. I don't think it'd be a good idea to put any structures there at present.
Got a lot of frontage.
There is a lot of frontage, yeah. They could tear down their bowling alley and have even. All right.
Well, I don't think we're talking like that whole area. We're talking about like what's already currently there and maybe like trees around it.
I don't see a problem with a garden there at all, at all.
Yeah. And I guess we could look like, look at how big of a little outbuilding we can get because if it's not huge, but will store some stuff, like if you put it right next to the area that's already fenced in, like that's not taking up a lot, like a lot of space. I don't see a problem with that. This is something that was in the plan to have a community garden. So I mean, I think that if you want to take it on, like you should be able to.
And I guess that if a few years that the property gets sold and developed, then we talk about that then, but
I think we should utilize it now.
Sitting there.
Why don't you work with the building department?
Do you have any like site plan or what you want to?
So there.
Sarah, work with the building department and get up some kind of a site plan.
Yeah, so Nathan Weston was somebody that was already working on this. He went hunting over the weekend, so he was going to send me, there's already plans built up and a whole PowerPoint presentation that he has. I think what we're going to do is put, because the soil study that was done there, it's mostly clay. So we really need to put like garden boxes there and not plant in the actual ground.
I see some boxes up there already.
Yeah, those were, Nathan made those and he has a few more that he's going, he wants to donate. He's put them up all around the community, actually.
I think that would be great.
And I was wanting to put.
Doctor Building Department, see about proceeding with some kind of plan.
Okay.
All right, we could go to one high, engine brake. Had a lot of complaints from citizens on Nook and Fruit about Jake breaking on the road. And I talked to Christine Anderson, who put together an ordinance. And I would like to see us adopt the ordinance to prohibit Jake breaking on their road. I've had an awful lot of people very, they're not angry, they're just tired of it.
I looked at the ordinance that Christine put together and as I was reading it, I had some questions in my mind, went back and read it and there is a liability clause in there for us. So I think we're in good shape with this ordinance and I see no reason at all that the truckers can't abide by that.
Well, in this ordinance, what I had a problem with was Roman having the authority to pull vehicles over. Does he have state law? Does he have that power to do that?
No, that would be police function.
Well, it's right in this ordinance.
I don't like that either.
That he can do that, that's.
He doesn't even have the power to do that, that's not something.
Under the law, a person can, a private citizen can go to a police officer, go to the police station, say, I want to report this and they can issue a ticket.
Right, well, what I'm saying is.
Sign the ticket.
The way this is wrote up and given Roman the authority to write that, that's not good on the township's behalf.
Yeah, why wouldn't we just leave that responsibility to our township police department?
Yeah, it's what we should do.
And the other question I have is, it states that county sheriff deputies and the Michigan State troopers are also authorized. I'm not sure if they are authorized to enforce township ordinances. They can enforce laws, but I don't know, you may know that Paul better than me, but we may want to look at that.
Actually, I do believe they can, but I'll double check it.
But I think the spirit of the ordinance is a good thing.
MSP enforcement around here.
What's that?
Not that we get the MSP enforcing anything around here.
Yeah.
All right, but why don't we table that and get those answers in? We'll come back on the next occasion. Have a second to table?
I'll second.
All right, poll in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we'll go to one J, final invoice for Manor.
Yes, the final invoice for Manor is $5,172. There will be no further. We are about $4,600 over the $12,000 that was budgeted for this. But in the original agreement, it was never capped at $12,000, depending on how much work they had to do. So we are responsible to pay this invoice.
Where do we stand with the reconciliations?
Done with January. When Manor was given our general to work on, that's all they were given. So when money transferred between DDA, our general accounts, she couldn't see the DDA accounts, she only had the general. So she was putting in general ledgers, she was putting in things in that shouldn't be or she's putting things in and not subtracting them out of something else.
Who was doing it?
Angie.
Oh, Angie.
From Manor.
From Manor. Because she was, she was only given, it's like if I give you my checkbook and keep the register and tell you, I want you to balance me out. So she did the best she possibly could with what she was given. And she did do a lot of our investments that were, that she had. But as far as the general ledger and the reconciliations, it's slow going to get everything straightened out and where it's supposed to be.
So she wasn't given the proper information from our former treasurer?
She was always to do our general account. She, and we have many, we have DDA, we have payroll, we have many accounts and she was only given the general to do.
All right, can we have a motion on this?
Is a stray note enough now or that time that she spent out is going to be minimized now?
Ooh, Christie?
What I mean.
Angie's, they're done.
They took all this time to do January.
They're done. No, Christie is done with January.
Okay. All right, so then, okay.
Christie has had to go back and fix what Manor has done.
But Manor Custarium is.
Done.
Done, they were done.
We won't see another building doing no more work. Okay.
I'll make a motion to pay Manor's final invoice in the amount of $5,172 from GL 101265805.
Second.
All right, do a roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Sarah Clemmons?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
No.
All right, we'll go to one K, Clay, Ira, Water Main, Interconnect. The authorization allowed our clerk to sign this for documentation on that.
So can you explain what this is to me?
Yeah, is that customary?
So in our policies, it does state that the township board can authorize another signer on contracts. BJ from PCE came in with Bev and I the other day with a contract in hand that had not been signed and work had been started. He said he'd been trying to get ahold of our supervisor and couldn't. So I signed the contract and Bev attested, so I'm asking BJ from PCE.
What contract was this?
So this is our Clay and Ira Water Main Interconnect project that has been board approved for some time now.
I was going to say that was approved, I think, almost a year ago.
Yes, it was. And work has been started and there was no contract signed. So what I am asking the board is to approve my signature on that contract or else we could have potentially been, if something were, would have happened, we would have potentially been in a lot of trouble because we did not have a signed contract with them.
So is there a reason that we had such a difficulty getting that contract signed? Paul?
I'm not aware of it, to tell you the truth, John, I'm not. I talk to PCE all the time. I don't, I never dealt with him.
Did they email us, did they call us?
He said that he emailed in the first part of September and he hadn't heard. Our supervisor. And then he, and then he followed up, I don't know when exactly. Alls I was concerned about is getting that contract signed. It was board approved and if, and if the supervisor's not available on that day, then we need to have an alternate.
On that day? September was like 60 days ago.
I'm just saying if you, when BJ came here and our supervisor wasn't available.
BJ came last Wednesday is when this happened with Bev and I. And he sat down with us and presented us with the situation and asked if we would sign on behalf of the township.
When was that first contract put up, what date?
Well. I mean, we board approved it over a year ago.
Over a year ago.
Yeah, a year ago. I'm not sure when he brought the contract.
I'm not sure.
When he initially tried to reach out.
Sign, our copy or his copy?
I signed all three copies.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a problem when our township supervisor cannot be contacted for months at a time and when we also have a deputy supervisor who's supposed to be here picking up the slack when he's not here. That's an issue.
I don't think our deputy supervisor can sign contracts.
No, but she can communicate with our supervisor and say, hey, we've got something that needs to be addressed. You know, here we go again with an email not being read. We lost $100,000 in county match money because Paul doesn't read emails.
We didn't lose a penny in match money.
No?
Not a penny.
No?
Go ahead and say that.
I think we did.
I think we saved money. We didn't do a role that we didn't need to do.
We lost $100,000 that was sitting on the table. So that's, we're getting in the weeds now. So did you check your emails since September, Paul? Have you checked your emails since September?
Every day I read them.
Every day? And you didn't get an email from PCE asking to sign this contract?
I don't remember seeing.
You don't remember?
Oh, I don't.
Wow.
All right, so do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion authorizing the clerk to sign contracts that are board approved in the event that the supervisor is not available.
I'll support that, but could we, could we maybe amend that though? And ask to give the treasurer that authority also?
I'll second that a moment.
All right.
That way we've got two people that are in the office every day that we don't have to worry about this problem happening again?
Can I ask that we also amend to include this contract that was signed on Wednesday? So it's.
Yes.
All right, poll in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we'll go to public comments.
Cheryl Restivo. I just would like to notate that I'm in the office every day and those things can be brought to my attention that if something has to be addressed to Paul, I was not told about it. That meeting or the meeting with the insurance, Paul was not told about. So the meetings that are happening, he has to be told about. He's not told about them, I'm not told about them to be able to give the communication. I've reviewed his emails with Paul and I have not seen those as well. So I don't know where the miss is, but it just goes back to communication and being open with each other. So if something needs to be done, we just tell each other and then we get it done. So if I don't know, I can't help what I don't know.
So just for the record, our supervisor and our deputy supervisor are making the claim that there was not an email?
I'm not making the claim there wasn't an email. I'm making the claim that. I have reviewed emails. I have reviewed emails, but I'm not making the claim that they're not there. I'm just saying that I reviewed them.
So if you reviewed them, did you see any email?
I didn't, I didn't see, I'm just, I stated, I don't know anything about this. So I'm in the office every day, just like Tanya and Bevar, so I'm able to be talked about anything. So I address any issue that's brought to my attention, but if there's something not brought to the attention.
Okay, but typically, aren't you in the assessing department? Aren't you a full-time assistant assessor?
I am a full-time assistant assessor.
So the only time you address supervisor stuff is when he's not there, is that correct?
No, I address any issue that comes to my attention.
No, I don't think that's what you were hired under. I remember specifically that when the supervisor was absent, the deputy would handle the duties, not.
Whatever clarification, I just wanted to make that known that I'm open to communication. When somebody comes to the window and they ask for some of the supervisor and he's not there, I ask if there's anything that I can do and provide those services. So I'm able to multitask.
I don't think that's what our issue is.
Okay. I did want to talk about the M-Tera. So the M-Tera situation was they were missing a supervisor for quite a while. We had a lot of complaints on a lot of different roads. And the new supervisor that now has been in place, working with them, they have come out and addressed any issues. There was glass on the roadway, they came out and they swept it up themselves. We were missing recycling bins for a very long time. And now we've already received our second batch, so they are getting better. So I talked with Julie and Mike, they both apologized for any of these. So I'm hoping to see a change in that, just to let everyone know. And Sarah, on the note of the community garden or on the note of that, there are a lot of parcels within the township that maybe could be utilized that would not be affected later, that we can't build on, we can't do anything with them. So there's a lot that were clarified wetlands, but there's actually property that could be utilized for a garden that you wouldn't be affected later, that you could put something more permanent. But I'm happy to review those with you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Siska, 5000 Teth Road. You probably all know who I am. This Manor Custarium final invoice. Wasn't this something that the treasurer was supposed to be doing? Wasn't this part of his job? Wasn't this part of his job? Mr. Cassidy, was this part of his job, his duties as treasurer?
This is your time to make public comment.
This is a public comment.
Well, you can make comments.
I'm asking you a question.
It's not a time, this isn't a question and answer session. If you want to talk to me after the meeting, I'll be, definitely answer your questions.
This was part of his duties, sir. He was getting paid to do this job. What was the total paid to custodian? Do you know? How many thousands of dollars did they pay this company to do his job? Was he getting paid his full salary to do this job? Why isn't he paying for this out of his pocket? Out of his salary? Why are we paying it? The citizens paying money to do a job he failed to do. We had a treasurer that did all this stuff. No problems, till Jerry Golka got in and didn't do the job. And now here we sit, paying thousands of dollars. Well, Jerry was supposed to be saving us money. Didn't he say that? He was gonna save us money that my daughter was stealing from the township. What a, what a, what a sad situation this is.
It's probably not over yet. There'll probably be more.
I just want to say that's really sad that we have, we had a treasurer that didn't do his job, we have a supervisor that's not doing his job, and we lost $100,000 in matching road funds, and we need roads fixed. The road in front of San Suzy needs to be fixed. That could have went for that road to be fixed. And because you don't read your emails, you don't come to work, all these things are being lost. These are very concerning to everyone. And you, you will be recalled. I wish you would just resign and make it easy on the township, but you are going to be recalled. It's in the process and it will be done.
So Cassidy, your demeanor has changed. You're trying to be more cooperative. Change of heart? No. It's a new strategy. Some of your party of five went home early. They resigned. That wiped out your guaranteed votes from your buddies and you lost control. So you've toned down the obnoxious arrogant Paul in hopes that the public will simply forget and the board will be distracted. Well, I'm your friendly reminder, and I won't back down, so slim chance of that happening. And what I will remind everyone right now is that the most of the damage that you have done in this township was not in this room, where the public and board members could see what was happening. No. Your damage is done behind the scenes, in private, when no one is looking. That's where you are the most dangerous to our township. You're not fighting for Clay Township, you're desperately fighting for Paul Cassidy, trying to cling to that middle chair as a last-ditch effort to move your own agenda, a ferry takeover. What are some of the things that happened behind the scenes? Well, you left the Board of Haida to run for the township supervisor in order to get your hands on ARPA funds for ferry feasibility study. First order of business? Negotiate a contract with OHM for that study in a back-room deal. You quickly clawed back the 150,000 in ARPA funds that was obligated to the water department, causing them to lose the money for their badly needed pole barn, but providing you with the money you wanted for the ferry feasibility study. You announced that you created a ferry ordinance without ever discussing it with the board. You used taxpayer-funded legal counsel without permission and initiated a ferry purchase that could have cost taxpayers millions, all behind the scenes. Now you're trying to dangle a multimillion-dollar carrot to the board and public of potential monies from Lisa McLean's office, when you couldn't even take the 100,000 in road repair funds from the county that they are trying to hand you, all because you failed to read an email. And you botched the algae wheel project from what it was supposed to be under the previous administration, because you couldn't figure out a way to finance it. I said before that you were now like a shriveled-up weed, but we all know that shriveled-up weed can cause a lot of damage if you don't pull it out by the root. Let me make this perfectly clear. Clay Township will not hand you the ferry, and Clay Township will not let you use this office as a weapon. So how do we effectively get to the root of our problem, which is an elected official by the name of Paul Cassidy? It's called recall. That's the citizens feasibility plan. And Paul, no amount of stalling or buying time is going to change that fact. And yes, I would like to have the phone number for the ARPA fund due.
Would you please, would you please sit down?
Would you please? You've got, you've got the microphone.
Ma'am, you have, you have three minutes, you used it. Please sit down.
I was wondering if you would give me the same courtesy that you gave some other people. I didn't think you would. But I would like that phone number. How, why don't you just write it, read it out now, so we can all write it down.
There's no further public comment. We'll go to board member comments. Mr. DeBoyer?
Yeah, a couple things. So first off, Paul, when you talked to Nick Bosa at the state, which I'm not quite sure why you talked to Nick at the state, because those are federal ARPA dollars, did you talk about the ARPA requirements?
Yeah.
Did you talk about a 45-day advertisement period for all bids? And what did Mr. Bosa say about the 45-day advertisement period?
This is your opportunity to make comments, John.
Oh, suddenly, no response?
Go ahead.
Okay. I can tell you what he would have said. He would have said there's a 45-day requirement on bids for all contracts, which we did not do, by the way. That's number one. Number two, in regards to the Southwater Authority, money through McLean's office that Paul talked about in our last meeting, Southwater has a representative who's been in contact with Ms. McLean's office through this whole process. Any grant money or earmarks that come from Ms. McLean's office have to come through the Southwater Authority, not through Clay Township.
I know that.
Okay. I just wanted to make everybody clear.
I said that, John.
Okay. My next question is, why did you appoint Kelly Nader as the administrator of the Clay Township Facebook page?
Any other comments?
Can you answer that, Paul? I'm curious why someone who has absolutely no attachment to our township, what goes on on a daily basis, would be the administrator of our township Facebook page?
John, okay.
Really makes me curious. But it does answer some questions when Jerry was throwing out disgusting comments to township citizens, that it wasn't stopped, it wasn't edited, it wasn't controlled. Were you okay with that, Paul?
Do you have any other comments?
Were you okay with that?
John, do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I do. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Clement, anything?
I do, actually, to piggyback off of John, because thank you for reminding me that I've had several people contact me about that, about the township Facebook page, and even Jerry Golka's treasurer page, and who was, they want to know who was in control of that, who was posting, was it just Jerry who was doing the township page? So obviously, Ms. Nader was one person, according to Mr. DeBoyer. Do we know if there was anybody else?
When I finally got access to the Facebook page, there was Brandy on our township Facebook page, who is our Parks and Rec, and Kelly Nader. And we got that removed, Bev and I.
So our Parks and Rec director was also part of all that nastiness to our community?
I just know that she was on the Clay Township page, because she's the Parks and Rec director. I don't know if the previous administrators deleted people before we were able to get into it, or who was running it before, but when we had access to it, that is who had access to it.
So who is on it now?
Myself, Brandy, and I believe Cheryl. Everything comes to my phone and I monitor every single post.
But Brandy was on it before?
She was on the Clay Township page before. I don't know anything about that treasurer page. That is not a township page at all.
I mean, I don't, I don't know Brandy at all, but I guess my concern is that if she's attached to what was going on, she had to have been aware of what was going on. And I don't know that, personally, I don't like the idea of entrusting the township's information, public information, to somebody that was part of that as well.
I think she mostly just did a lot of the Parks and Recs things that she was adding on, because they, the Clay Township and Parks and Recs were liked.
Yes.
Those Facebook pages. And I've never seen Brandy put anything besides Parks and Recs information on there. That's all I've seen.
But we know, that was confirmed, that Kelly Nader was running that, you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Roy, do you have anything?
Just, but happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You have that, too.
Tanya, do you have anything?
I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I just want to touch on, this last year has been extremely challenging. Change is very hard. And I just want to make my intentions clear of being the clerk. I am here to do the job and do the, the best job for this township. I care about this township and I'm here to work. And I show up every single day to work, and I want you all to know that. And that's it.
Ms. Rose, you have anything to add?
Well, first, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I hope you have a wonderful day. The treasurer's office is coming along pretty well. Christie is through January on the reconciliations. When you have too many hands in your books, it does take some time. And she works continuously. I get texts from her all day long to check this or check that. I've been doing the investments that I'll present to you by the end of this year, because I need to get approval on where we are investing money from the board. There's not going to be any change in the investments, the companies we invest to. I just want you all to know where the money is, who's, who's with it, because we have my class and we have CIBC. So I just want to make everybody on the board aware of where our money is, who has it, what interest rates we're earning, and, and discuss any long-term plans we have, so maybe I can lock up money for a little bit longer, we get a better interest rate. Right now, everything is pretty much like a, a four a week, and we're getting like a 4.05. And that's just going to go down. But we did get 5% when we locked it up longer. So that's it.
Kurt, do you have anything?
Does that include anything in the community foundation that we have on the investment?
Nothing, I'm, just our personal investments.
All right, planning commission. Had a good planning commission meeting. Gary brought up the idea of property being platted for recreation animals. So that's something that our planner is reviewing. It's the first time we ever heard about that. As far as the height of the buildings are concerned, we're coming back with some better language, and I believe we're going to maintain the 15-foot height required. Straight line setback on a waterfront property. Apparently, there is a contradictant to that, so we're taking a look at that as well. Sometimes you have property that's up there closer to the water, or your straight line doesn't allow for the house to even be there because of the setback. So we're going to be taking a look at that. The planner is going to come up with some more verbiage. And I want to thank Tanya for the job that she's doing. It's not an easy job, and especially Bev, your job is, and Christie. I appreciate that, and I appreciate John bringing all this stuff to Ford, and Sarah and Roy. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Paul in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.